We're going to call the committee at a whole meeting for February 24th, 2021 to order. I'll ask the Stanford to pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have a clerk take your role, please.
Trusty Pierce.
President.
Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Peterson.
Here.
Trusty Domeniak is absent. Trusty Paulus.
Here.
Trusty Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here. Okay, great. Okay, I'll need the approval of the January 27th, 2020 special meeting minutes. And committee of the whole meeting minutes as presented. I'll entertain a motion in a second, please.
No more.
A motion by trustee Pierce.
Masonic.
Masonic, I'm sorry. Mask.
I got a thick mask on today.
Okay, that's a motion by trustee Masonic for a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Paulus. Any questions, trustee Pierce?
No, I was asked to do the mightn't vote by. I will not be voting on that.
Trusty Masonic, please.
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay. Trusty Peterson?
No questions.
Thank you. And trustee Paulus?
No questions.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to take the role, please.
Masonic, or I'm sorry, Pierce?
Abstained.
Masonic?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Hi.
Okay, five are, four are voting yes, one's abstained, one is absent. This motion is carried. We have several items tonight under regular business. I, for the board's information, the agenda was posted last week on Friday. And I spent the entire weekend just researching some of these things. I am removing item number eight, discussion number eight. After doing extensive research, I'm going to pull that item. It does not need to be on the agenda at this time unless the board feels that way. But if I concur on a motion to that effect, to pull it, I would entertain that.
I'll make a motion.
Trusty Peterson made that motion. And seconded by trustee Paulus. Any questions, trustee Pierce? No questions, Your Honor. Trusty Masonic?
I would just like to see, since we don't have to discuss it, but moving ahead on transparency, we can have some type of running portal on our webpage of some type of, because we got, you know, stuff coming up in April for an attendance record. Because I've asked for it, other people have asked for it. It just kind of makes sense that we have an attendance record for people that are on here. We don't have to discuss it, but it just seems common sense that we have posted for the constituents of an attendance record for people that are here, phone in. Aren't here, it just, everybody's talking transparency, it just makes sense for.
It seems like a discussion about.
I understand that, but that's my question. Why, what, why, why answer that on the Facebook or the webpage, Ted? I understand it's a discussion. I'm not running for office.
I don't, I'm just saying, if we're going to vote here, we should vote on whether there's a discussion and if there's not a discussion, then we.
Yeah, I mean, I researched this myself and this is for another day and we can discuss it at a different time if you want, but tonight's not the night. Trusty Paulus?
No question.
And trustee Johnson?
No questions.
I'm sorry, trustee Peters, I cast you right up.
That's okay, no, no questions.
I'm sorry for that. A roll call, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Masonic?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Paulus?
Yeah.
Johnson?
No. Okay, we got the four voting yes, actually three voting yes, two no's, one absent, motions carried. Okay, first item we have is a BYOB, Bring Your Own Booze Liquor License Request for Drive Time Golf. I'd like to invite Gregory Osgood up to the podium to give us a little history and a little background on your request. And the board will hear that and thank you for coming on.
Yeah, thank you. Well, so, you know, they're working to open up an indoor golf facility. And really, you know, the vision for is to capture new golfers, grow the market for female golfer specifically, sort of the high school range, you know, based on what I've seen of new for my daughter in particular. Of course, I've been a golfer all my life, so it's a passion of mine. So, the idea is that I don't want to become a bar golf facility. That's not really my mission. So, BYOB seems appropriate, so people can, you know, enjoy. If they want a full bar experience, they'll just walk right next door to Lucky Bernie's.
Is there any examples that you know in your industry that would have had that? Is there, are you basing it off of other locations that have a similar situation? Just a new concept that you feel like you would need based on what you're trying to do out?
Yeah, not a new concept. There are facilities that do have BYOB. But there's some that are strictly training and minds training and entertaining, so that component's going to add.
And where would the location be that you're looking at?
Right next to Lucky Bernie's, sandwiched in between Enterprise and Lucky Bernie's.
Or the sound, sound design.
Yeah.
Okay. Trusty Pierce, do you have any questions of Gregory at all?
I have one question for the attorney. Does the BYB license allow gambling? I don't remember.
No, not at all.
Well, you have to have a full pouring license with a full liquor license to fall by for gaming machines.
All right, and Gregory, did you say you were going to have teenagers there? Is that what you?
Yeah, so the, I mean, the facility is going to be open to all ages. So, yes, there will be, and that's another reason why I don't want it to be a bar, because, you know, it's not, I don't think it's, it's just not my vision for what the center's going to be, so.
All right, do they have to follow the corkage rules that like the wine places had, that used to have to follow?
Okay. That's all my question. Okay, thank you. Trusty Masonic?
You look like a good golfer, so.
Looks to be the same.
I think this is overdue for the town, you know. I look forward to using it, for one. The, 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 or license that, you know, golf courses have alcohol in the golf courses, I don't see that being an issue. The training for the kids, it's overdue. I think you'd be an asset for the town. I, I, I would look forward to seeing some, especially in the winter months that everybody says, hey, I was, I went up over here on an indoor facility and when I take it, you could tweak it for me. I'm hitting 300 yards and if another person goes, are they getting 200 yards?
There you go. Done.
Anything else, trustee Masonic?
No.
And trustee Peterson?
No questions, Your Honor.
All right, trustee Paulus?
My only question is if somebody does bring in alcohol and then it's still your responsibility, then I would imagine for them to make sure that they're old enough to be, to have it in them. Right?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's a good idea, I have no problem with it.
Trusty Johnson?
As a sports fanatic myself, I think it's really great.
Maybe we can get Jerry to start to golf.
Get better at it.
That is, the only thing, the concern I would only have with you, Greg, is the fact that when you do have the youth in there as far as like the training and stuff, I hope that you would separate that out and maybe limit, if you are going to do it, maybe have specific times for the, I'm assuming it'd probably be later in the day. It's probably not going to be really, you hate to see somebody open up at 10 o'clock and already bringing, you know, there should be some kind of guidelines on a BOIB anyways for when you should start that, you know. But if you have training in there for, for the high school or grade school students, I would hopefully be limited to that, you know, and watch that.
Yeah, yeah. And my facility's not big enough to have, you know, multiple groups in there.
Okay, so you already have that figured out?
Yeah.
That's all I have. All right, we can't vote on this here because it's a committee at a whole meeting, but I would ask the board if they would like to transfer this item to the next village board agenda. We can do an official, get your name for you.
Yeah, I'd be happy to see it on the agenda.
Okay. Everybody else okay to push it forward?
Yes.
It doesn't guarantee it's, but it just gets it to our village board level.
You can tell it's a handicap.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Tru Ho. She also is looking for a BOIB liquor license request. She owns Crystal Mails and Spa currently. The floor is yours.
Yeah, how are you? Hi, everyone. Yeah, so, the reason I want, I want to ask for the BYOB because sometimes I have like the customer, they have like a group, like baby shower or like birthday, you know, like five, six people, they come at a ten time and then they want to bring a little bit champagne, you know, they want to enjoy their moment with like their friend or their family. Yeah.
Sounds like special events and things like that.
Yeah, you're like sometime, not like all the time, like, you know. And then I don't sell it, I don't.
Oh, you can't sell it?
Yeah, yeah, the customer, they agree.
Okay. I'll ask the board, trustee Pierce, again, one question?
I'm fine with this being on the agenda also.
Okay, trustee Masonic, trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Are you okay putting in?
I'm good with it.
Trusty, go.
I'm good with it as well.
Okay, we'll do the same thing we did with the, the drive time ball. You know, you guys can come back at the next meeting, which will be the second Monday of March, and we'll put this up as an item on the agenda. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a presentation, our marketing consultant presentation altogether in the Clue Group. This was a process that Administrator Time and Community Development Director, Michael Garrigan worked on for the past few months and did a presentation and introduced the Clue Group.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the Village solicited RFQ request for qualifications. I believe it was, was it December, Lori? I believe it was. We had five respondents. There was a range, I think we had one from Canada, a large company, there was a couple smaller ones and then we kind of narrowed it down to two that seemed to have some municipal experience and kind of the capacity to do what we're looking for as far as determining what a marketing strategy would look like for us. We've, we've had some marketing efforts, but we've never really conducted a strategy. What, what should our strategy be and target and identify, you know, what we're going to have? So, we ended up interviewing two firms and staff is recommending the Altogether Group. Coincidentally, it matched our campaign that we came up with, but coincidentally, the Altogether Group and the Clue Group have joined forces. They presented a nice proposal, I think you have that in your packet, I believe. They are with us via Zoom tonight, the principals of both Altogether and the Clue Group, and I believe they have a little presentation to show you more about what they're about and who they are and what they do. So, why don't you guys take it away?
Got it, thank you so much. I am Marissa Schultz with Altogether. I'm here with my partner, Rachel Smith, as well as Josh Bloom with the Clue Group. We're really excited to be here today, so thank you so much for the opportunity to just talk more a little bit about our team and our approach and for the marketing and communications plan. We really enjoyed presenting to Lori and Administrator Time and hearing more about their goals for this project. And we definitely want to use this presentation, this conversation, to hear more about your thoughts and your goals as well. Altogether is a, we're a community branding, engagement and place making firm, and we see all three of these realms coming together on this project in a really interesting way. And what we found through our work around the country is that people want to have a connection with their community or be part of a town where those connections exist. And if they don't find it, they'll go looking for it somewhere else. So, what we're talking about today is, I think, is as important as any infrastructure or economic development decision. And part of this planning effort will definitely focus on tourism, but it will also, and I think it's important to remember, that business decisions are made by people. CEOs and their employees want to live in great places. Families increasingly want to be a part of a connected, or connected to a community in different ways. And the way that we realize that this is a great place is by hearing about it, knowing someone who lives there or visiting. So, what we're going to talk about today is how our approach, and we'll show some examples from other places, will really set you all up for success in telling the story of Antioch to create that connection to community. So, how do we do that? It first starts with engagement. Rachel, if you want to move to the next slide. So, when you're talking about a marketing plan, as you know, there are so many different players who are going to be involved in its implementation. And we've found that ensuring that these brand ambassadors are part of the process early on is a big indicator on the success of a project like this. So, most importantly, we come into a community and we don't pretend to, to, to know that community like the people that live there. So, we really lean on engaging the community in a way that makes them want to share their stories and their memories and the feelings that they have about this place. And then, Rachel, next. We take these stories that we've collected and we pair them with our research and quantitative analysis that Josh is going to be talking about to really develop this marketing plan. And it will include, at the end of this, strong messaging, branded collateral, and all the tools you'll need to share those stories and the image of Antioch in a very consistent way. So, like a lot of other firms, we do this and we'll guide you through doing this in a variety of channels, including a lot of the traditional ones, the print, the radio, media. But I think that where we are unique and our team, in addition to our marketing and branding experience, is that we think bigger picture from an urban design perspective. So, Rachel and I are both urban designers and planners. And so, we really bring the understanding of how the implementation of a community brand is translated into an authentic and lived experience. And we know that you're doing a lot of work, you've got your downtown plan that's going on. And so, we can help kind of make the connections of what comes out of this process and how that unfolds into the public realm. So, with that being said, I'd love to pass the Zoom button over to Josh. We have had the really good fortune of working with him on a number of different projects and we're excited to have him on this team. So, Josh, kick it over to you.
Hi. Okay, hi. So, Clue Group, we sound, it sounds like a private investigative agency, but it actually stands for the Community Land Use and Economics Group. We have been around for 18 years and, and before that, my partner at Clue Group and I were at the National Main Street Center, working with Main Street, working on Main Street revitalization around the country. Most of what we do is market analysis and small business development in traditional downtowns. I have to say, over the last year, a lot of what we've been doing has been tracking the impacts of the pandemic on small businesses and, and working with communities on recovery, on economic recovery going forward. So, I'll hand it back to you.
Thanks, Josh. So, our approach for this project really breaks down around three key tasks. What differentiates Antioch, how to position Antioch, and creating marketing strategies and an implementation plan. So, for each of these areas, we'll discuss some of the scope items that fall under that category and then reference some relevant experience. So, first, what differentiates Antioch? Our goal is to understand what this place means to people, how people perceive Antioch and how their current branding and communications reflect that. And we'll start with some site visits, as Marissa says, we don't pretend to, you know, currently know this place as intimately as we'd like to, so this is an important part of the process. But by not knowing it, we can also bring an important objectivity and curiosity to learn about all that makes it great. And then we'll move on to an analysis and audit of your current communication channels. So, we recognize the work that you've done to date and we want to build on that and understanding what is working and what's not. We also work to define what success looks like from a marketing perspective so that we can tailor strategies to advance and measure that success. So, this was our site visit slide. The, so, we're currently working in Fountain Square, which is a neighborhood in Indianapolis. These are some slides from a recent presentation, you know, in analyzing their communications channels, we found that their main challenge was actually just organization. They had a good story to tell, but there were too many players and no cohesive voice. And by analyzing, you know, similar districts in Indianapolis and across the Midwest, we're able to learn how they overcame the same challenge with better organizational structures and incentives for business participation. So, we really want to like look at who your competitors are, what they're doing and understand, you know, that is a way to start scoping what you should be doing. As Marissa mentioned, we're all about community engagement and for our communications process, it's so important to hear from both residents who are consumers of Village Communications and staff members who are responsible for message distribution. So, whether these are in-person or online, we utilize interactive methods to make it engaging and get people sharing. You know, we'll want to work with you all to identify who needs to be a part of these conversations and have found that there are real benefits in virtual focus groups that COVID has brought on. We feel like these virtual meetings offer a lot more flexibility and end up being more accessible for young families and working parents, which are really important groups to engage. So, we hope this part of COVID maybe sticks around. While focus groups are great, we also need to cast a wider net sometimes. And so, we design surveys that ask questions that get to the feeling of the place as a method to collect stories. So, through the process we did in Calumet, one question we asked was, you know, what is your first memory of this place? And that type of emotional question led to the richest stories of, you know, remembering your father getting home from the steel mill after a night shift, stories that paint a richer picture of the identity of a place. And after finding the right questions, we work to find the right places to put that survey to maximize engagement from the target audiences. So, trying to get to that intangible and the feelings of a place through our process. I'm going to hand it back to Josh.
Okay. So, I'm working in, right now, among the things I'm doing is working with eight communities in New Jersey, specifically on economic recovery from COVID. But in this example, of Hamilton, which is in South Jersey, the reason I wanted to show it to you is because it's an example of connecting brand to strategy. And so, Hamilton happens to be the, the blueberry, they consider themselves the blueberry capital of the, of the world, of the, of the US. Most of the blueberries that, that you buy are either from Hamilton or from Michigan. And, and what they've done is they've kind of made that blueberry, the, that industry part of the identity of Hamilton. And it is, it kind of cuts across many different ways in Hamilton, including their large and well-known Blueberry Festival, but also in the businesses that they have developed. Like the, there's a distillery in Hamilton, New Distillery, that makes blueberry infused alcoholic beverages. Restaurants include, specifically include blueberries in their, in their menu as part of the ingredients of the things they serve. And it's also included in the identity in things in, like weight finding signage and, and other ways that you experience Hamilton. The color of blueberries is kind of seen throughout downtown. So, it's, it's a way of kind of thinking about economic strategy and how that connects to brand. And that's one of the things that I think Marissa and Rachel and I are good at collaborating on. So, this is something which is really kind of part of the transition that we're in right now, which is thinking about how we move forward from the present moment. And we've learned a lot about the way small businesses need to adapt, not just right now, but for the future. One of them is thinking of all of the, is using all of the different ways that they can reach customers in addition to those coming in the front door, which is how most small businesses connect with their customers in the past. People have become accustomed to a new kind of convenience of being able to pick up curbside, having things delivered. Those things are going to continue. There's probably going to be a reset of commercial real estate, just especially in the office market, but probably also in the retail market. And we've all seen restaurants adapting in ways that probably we wouldn't have imagined in the past, beyond curbside delivery, creating outdoor dining in ways that they haven't done before. Those things are also probably going to continue. And there is kind of a moment here where despite the business losses that many communities have experienced over the past year, we are also probably going to see a lot of new business development in this recovery, which we all hope is around the corner. So, so that's going to create, I think, new opportunities for downtowns too and ways to connect to the, to the work that we're proposing here.
Thank you, Josh. And so, and then in this kind of second step, this is really where we'll position the Antioch brand. And so, the goal will be to, to really position the grand, to the brand to leverage what differentiates it through design and communications. And that's through really figuring out the market segmentation, refining the brand messaging and stories, figuring out what your priorities are. We would love to and have set aside some of the budget for, to work with a photographer because we think that photos are a really important part of this. And then designing that brand collateral. So, for target audience profiles, you know, you cannot be everything to everyone all at once. Antioch has a lot to offer and a lot of people to market to. So, what we'll do is we'll help you define those priorities and craft different messages for different groups. And we do this by creating these target audience profiles where we split these like kind of personifications or characters into different market segmentations. So, they help us to group people with different interests. So, where they hang out, what websites are they looking at? What businesses are they visiting? Are they going to certain bars? And that helps us to craft specific messaging and strategies to target different people. And then, Rachel, next. Throughout our conversations, there's, there are going to be key words and phrases that kind of keep popping up and we'll work with that. We recognize that you have this tagline that of authentic by nature, which we really like and which the community has embraced. And what we would suggest at this point is based on what we get back from our first phase is to build on that, expand or maybe refine the story. Because brands, they're living things and if your target audiences are changing and the ways you're communicating and the channels have changed, the way that you talk about Antioch has probably evolved as well and should evolve. And we want to make sure that we capture that in this process.
Um, we also want to look at the logo. So, we understand that this logo was adopted in 2011. The thing is, a community's identity is constantly evolving as are design styles. And so, before you make a major investment in the implementation of a marketing communication strategy, it might be a good time to revisit this and potentially make some updates. That doesn't need to be a full rebranding, just a refresh, perhaps updating some of the type treatments and/or graphics to keep the essence of the logo, but give it an update. As Marissa mentioned, another really important part of this process for us is having strong photography of Antioch to work with. Because as much as I love graphic design, photography can say so much more. So, you know, for our work in Calumet, this was so important. We really needed to capture the small town feel, the contrast between the natural and the industrial and the heritage of the area. We worked with a local photographer who really knew the area and, you know, with some direction from us in terms of what we were trying to capture in the brand, was able to, you know, do that in photography so beautifully. So, that's why we included a line item in our budget to work with a local photographer because we think it's really essential to any branding and marketing campaign to have strong photography to work with. So, this is another example of, you know, how that, the brand comes together, you know, the logo with photography really helps to tell a story that they, you know, don't quite do individually. We also included time for collateral. So, to work with you all to determine what are the high priority items that you need templates for, that, you know, you need to communicate the brand and communicate the marketing campaign and start to design those. So, whether that's email templates, banners for downtown, mockups for signage or streetscape elements, we want to. or streetscape elements, we want to give you the direction you need to begin implementing the brand in a more robust way. And then finally, here's more additional examples of, you know, examples of signage and streetscape elements and how branded elements play into those. So this final step is designed to ensure that the branding and marketing campaign developed through this project is, you know, immediately celebrated, strategically implemented and routinely evaluated. So we'll outline ideas and strategies for traditional and experiential marketing, create brand guidelines and a toolkit for your, your team to use and outline an implementation strategy for next steps. Josh?
So this is another, this, this happens to be another example from one of the communities I'm working with in New Jersey, just because it seemed apropos. Given the natural resources that you have in Antioch, this is Mount Holly, New Jersey, which has a creek, a lot, a portion of a very, of a very long creek that runs through the entire community, kind of meanders through. And it goes right through the center of downtown, but it does it at a below grade level, as you can see in kind of the bottom right slide. And what they're trying to do is to integrate that natural resource connection to downtown by creating more ways to access the water, creating visibility of the water and, and kind of using that as part of the brand of Mount Holly and, and having the kind of amenities that allow Mount Holly to attract a visitor that it had not, that it really has not previously been marketing itself to. These are some of the things that, that really kind of existed, that were, that were really kind of had become part of customers' expectations before COVID, but remain equally important. This idea of people, especially now, no longer necessarily needing to come downtown to buy something, they will want to come downtown to have an experience and to, and to have some kind of interactive, some opportunity for interactivity. And the values that people kind of connect with, and, and I think this applies very much to Antioch and sort of thinking about it's, the brand that you currently have, is, is how important it is to people to connect to local sourcing, both in businesses and also in thinking about kind of the importance of place to them, the importance of having human connections, which we've all missed so much over this recent, over this recent period. And this idea of social consciousness, like doing, doing well by doing good and patronizing businesses that, that embody that value and patronizing places that incorporate that value into their, into their brands.
Thank you, Josh. Just to add to that, you know, that, so the last step of our process will really be to define the marketing channels and that you also look at in terms of an advertising budget, what should go where? How do you best get the message across for your brand to those different target audience profiles that I talked about before? And that'll include, you know, ads on the train, news, media, things that you've been doing. But it will also include experiential branding and marketing. And as Josh mentioned, this is, it's, it's extremely important now. And it's what tourists and young people and families are looking for and they will continue to do so, especially after COVID. And so there's, there's a couple of ways to look at that and what we, what we bring to this process. The first is through just programmatic avenues, like coming up with itineraries for things to do in and around Antioch during the day and then working with influencers to, to share those. Thinking about digital programming that can get people out and earning points through different scavenger hunts to kind of shop locally. And then there's also place making in communities and downtowns, which is a part of the program, programming, but it's also really that kind of the visual component where we bring art and pop-ups and make it fun. It gives reason, people a reason to go downtown and to come to the community to participate. And we can do that around events or on Saturdays or, Rachel and I have been working on a lot of different programming and this, these types of activations in Chicago and in the suburbs. Rachel, if you'll go to the next slide. And that even during COVID that are bringing people out. This is a project that we had in downtown Evanston called Make Lemonade, where it was like, we have been handed a year full of lemons. What can we as a community do? And so we had this really fun kind of pop-up art that was in their downtown plaza and then three other parts of, of the downtown. And, and we tied it together through a, a digital scavenger hunt through Eventy. It's an app where people could go on and they could, you know, if you came to different participating businesses which had lemon decals all over their windows and their doors, you got points. And we had a gigantic kind of decal on a window in a vacant building downtown that the more attract purchases and the more points that people got, the higher the pitcher was filled. And so the community really felt like they were a part of something, even during COVID, to get back in, you know, back out there shopping locally and, and feeling like they were some, they were a part of a, a bigger community, which we all need right now. And so with that being said, turn that back over, turn it back over to Rachel to just talk about the last couple of, of items in, in our process.
So, you know, we really want to give you everything you need to set the Antioch branding and marketing strategy up for success. So we'll specify the specific type treatments, colors, photography guidelines, recommendations on accessibility and more. And in addition to the brand guide, you know, we'll provide a package of all the files, formats and tools that you need for anyone else to take your brand and use it effectively. And finally, implementation. You know, this is where we tie it all together, connecting your target audiences to the identified marketing tactics and channels, defining key performance indicators, outlining budget allocations as well as potential partners and funding sources to make it all happen. And successful, successful marketing plans have SMART goals. SMART meaning specific, measurable, achievable, realistic and time-bound. So we'll work to define, you know, what your objectives are for this plan. And to drive, whether it's, you know, driving more engagement on social media or increasing the number of businesses moving to Antioch or engaging online or increasing traffic and click-throughs on your website and newsletters, and then design metrics to measure that success.
So in closing, I know we've thrown a lot at you tonight. We also recognize that you have other agenda items. So we wanted to try to hit on everything, but in a very quick way. And we'd love to open this up to, to questions. I think we're just really excited about working with you all because we think and we know that you know that Antioch has a lot of potential to grow as a place that people want to experience. You know, you've got this incredible fabric of a main street with a metro station, direct access to Chicago. As Josh mentioned, the forest preserves and the recreational opportunities that are just between Milwaukee and Chicago and affordable housing options for families and young people. And I think that there's a way that we can really craft your story and it could resonate with a lot of different people. Like whether you're Rachel and way cooler than I am and thinking about starting a family and where you can buy a place that has a cool downtown and get to the city or like myself, who has, you know, three kids and needs a COVID escape and I want to take a, a trip that is not in southeast Michigan or Door County or Josh, you know, who's in Philadelphia and loves historic downtowns and wants to get away for a weekend. So I know that you know all of this, but we're just really excited to, to be a part of helping to tell your story. And I told this to Lori at Administrator time, but it was funny was we were putting the presentation together. We were looking through images of Antioch and the image of the two folks on the bottom. I saw it pop up and it's actually my husband's, his uncle and his wife. So I was like, oh, this is perfect. I'm going to, we already have Antioch connections in the family. So with that being said, we'd love to open it up to, to any questions about anything that we've talked about here or any thoughts and ideas that you have for the communications and marketing plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I will open the floor up first, Trustee Pierce.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really want to thank staff for their hard work on going out for an RFQ on this and finding, if everything is here, a high-quality national firm that can help us do what we've been needing to do for quite a while, which is building our brand and making Antioch stand out and differentiate from other areas. I do have some questions. I noticed that the, the cost is like fifteen thousand for the, the first, the first year. And I mean, it's paid for fifteen thousand now this year. We got to find some funds to cover that. And then we've got twenty-one thousand coming out of next year's budget. But there's a key word in there, the additional cost with implementation. So what we're doing here, just to correct me if I'm wrong, is we're doing all the work to figure out where we're going. But if we want to go further, we either have to do it ourselves or we have to pay additional money to, to do it.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. This is going to develop our strategy and our plan and give us a toolkit and certain things that staff will be using. Or I'll be passing along, you know, some of our marketing activities are done through Visit Lake County. You know, we're able to sometimes participate for, for a cost in some of their winter campaigns or their summer campaigns. So I would take what I get from them and try to blend that into those campaigns. And if we decide to budget for a billboard, you know, on ninety-four or do radio or social media campaigns, we'll have the materials we need. But yeah, there will, there will be ongoing costs, you know, to market.
Okay, and we'll, for, for this group here, once the implementation plan comes up, will the expectation be for them to continue on with some form of longer-term contract? Is this the initial in the door where we set everything up? And then we got to sign another contract to get more money out?
I have asked for a continuing contract for additional work we may, you know, staff can only do so much. So when we need help throughout time after they've, you know, done the scope, the scope of services, I have asked for, it's basically an hourly fee.
Can we be provided what that basic hourly fee is and what the long-term cost would be? If, if you were to work with the average-sized community that's our community? I mean, I'm excited for this. I just want to go into it with my eyes wide open.
Yeah, I, I, I can estimate.
Okay.
I can try to estimate it. I don't have that, I don't have that right now, but I'll, I'll see what I, if I can maybe do a little work on that and send it to the board.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Trustee Mason.
I looked on the page, where, where the, where the item? What's the address?
Where, where is altogether added?
In here.
Yeah, the, the question is, is where are you located?
Oh, yes. So we are located in, in Chicago, actually.
So, all the pictures I saw, I'll take my, all the pictures I saw, who, who, who's, who's going to, you know, because I, you know, Chicago is obviously different. Antioch's different than Chicago. So when you start doing branding, where do you get the information from? Who's going to take the pictures? Who's going to tell the story?
Well, I think, you know, we started with, you know, finding a local photographer. So that's, you know, part of our budget is to, you know, find a photographer, whether they're from Antioch or from, you know, regionally. I think that's, you know, who's going to take the pictures is, you know, we're not photographers. We don't pretend to be, but know that there are plenty of talented people out there who can help tell that story. You know, we have worked in plenty of places that are not Chicago. Worked in plenty of small towns across the Midwest and across the country. So I think that, you know, while every place is different, there's also, you know, there's some similarities of wanting to feel connected to a place and wanting to be able to, to tell that story. So, and that's why we do engagement as well, because, you know, what's important to me might not be important to someone else living in Antioch. And so that's why we, you know, start this process with hearing from residents, from business owners, from, you know, staff who are leading communications and understanding what makes this place unique and how we need to tell that story.
Okay, because I think sometimes the stories kind of missed and, you know, Antioch being a, a place where people love to volunteer, first, first rest, first paramedic in, in the state of Illinois. Some of those stories are missed. And, and I'm not disagreeing that, that branding should be looked at. I do have a question. This would be for staff. There's a question here, whereas the village board notices planning foods elements, which cannot be specified, adequate precision and present time due to need, cover some amount of work, create the final, I'm, I'm assuming that's, that's where this is going to be an ongoing cost of unknown.
That's right.
So we, we, you would be asking us to, to do something that you don't know what the cost would be down the road. And, and, you know, Mary always asks, this is a budget item at this point in time.
So, we are going to budget, I can't recall what the amount is, but we are going to budget i- in the next budget. And we'll talk about this in, in later on in this meeting. But we will, you will approve, you know, some kind of budget for staff. And we'll have to live within that budget. You know, if we decide we're going to spend, you know, fifteen thousand dollars a year on marketing initiatives, you know, we'll, we'll try to prioritize what gives us the most bang for the buck. You know, and if it's ten thousand or, you know, you got, you guys are going to set the limit for, you know, what, what we do. Of course, the more money you spend, the more, you know, broader your reach and the more, you know, the more success you may have. But ultimately, we're going to, yeah, we're going to put a, a budget amount and a line item in and we'll work within that budget item.
And, and, and this is probably the bigger point too. Who controls the, the stuff on Facebook, the webpage that goes out there? Is that you guys?
No, staff would have control.
Okay, so staff would have control. Would that come back to board's feedback saying, you know, and the, you know, the refreshed branding? You know, maybe, maybe board should have a little more impact on that.
Oh, yeah, you, you're, you're going to be part of this process. This is not just, we hire them and, no, you're, you're going to be part of the storytelling. You're going to have that opportunity to provide your input of what that story is. And then, you know, they're going to come back, we'll come back to the board. After, after we've done research at milestones, we'll invite them back to the board to update you and show you. If they want to change the logo in, in any way, you know, that's got to be board. It's your logo. You know, we're, we're basically staff and consultants that are attempting to, you know, provide you with a finished product that you're happy with. So all along the way, this board is going to have input and final approval of, of what we do and what we come up with.
Yeah. All right.
I would, I'd love to just add on to that. I think Administrator, you, you covered it really well on a couple of points that I just want to emphasize. One is that, you know, what we will, and through our engagement, we talked a lot about working with residents and businesses, but you are a, a big stakeholder in this process. So there will be a continual loop and as much as you want of, of feedback and of you participating in, in shaping the story, the brand, and then ultimately the implementation plan. And you mentioned Administrator, kind of, of just, you know, deciding what those, those priorities are and what is the biggest bang for the buck. So we will help you identify these different channels, what the associated costs are. We can work within certain budgets. And we'll take kind of all of our analysis and decide, okay, here's where you can most effectively share the story and the brand of Antioch in the most cost-effective way. So that is a big part of, I think, this planning process. It's, it's so that, that things are just kind of flung out there and hoping that you're spreading the word, but it's a very strategic way to approach the way that you talk about yourself. And as I mentioned, it'll be in a very transparent kind of budget-oriented process.
Okay. Anything else, Trustee?
No.
Trustee Pierce, any questions? She's muted, you're muted.
I just unmuted. I'm really excited about this. This is very, very exciting. And my questions have already been answered. And I'm really looking forward to what's going to transpire next. Yes.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee Paula?
The only thing I wanted to add is that although there's also board involvement, will we have like involvement from Economic Development Committee? Any surveys going out to the public, things like that, to get other involvement, you know, from people who actually...
I, I think it would be important to have stakeholder groups like the Economic Development Task Force, you know, maybe certain businesses or a segment of businesses, this board, maybe civic organizations. But yeah, I, I think in the data collection part, you know, where they have to learn the story, you know, they're going to have to talk to people. And it, you know, I think we can steer them toward, you know, these stakeholder groups to, to get them to the table. And I, I think it's important, you, you saw a graphic in that presentation where they had like a QR code taped to a, a pole outside somewhere where, you had the, I think the public could walk by that pole if it were downtown, snap a pic of that QR code, that might lead, lead them to a survey or, or try to, you know, solicit input from, you know, as many people as possible. I, I think that's, I think that's their goal is to, and they can... and they can, they can chime in here, but I think their goal is to get as much intelligence as possible about our story and that's how they're gonna do it. But why don't you guys go ahead and, and answer?
Uh, can I also jump in for a sec? Um, so I think another thing is you guys, another part of this, as you're wanting to reach out to audiences outside of Antioch, is to find out what the perceptions of Antioch, um, what, what perceptions outsiders hold of Antioch so that you understand how the current brand and how the future kind of fits into what they see. And so, and actually, some of the technology that we've become more and more accustomed to over the last year can make that process easier than it was in the past, um, to gather a virtual focus group, to use QR codes posted in public where people can scan them, and that should be an opportunity also to bring in those, those um, viewpoints.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, you guys said it all, we are gonna listen to you in terms of who we need to be talking to. I mean, we have input as well as, you know, we definitely want to hear from businesses, we want to hear from, from different boards and commissions, we want to hear from residents, we want to hear from non-residents. Um, but, you know, we trust that you all are the expert on who are the voices that we should be hearing to and as long as they're, you know, represent the diverse stakeholders that make up Antioch and, you know, we're on board to talk to however many people it takes because we, you know, that's where any good brand starts. It doesn't start with us coming up with ideas. It, it starts with us understanding the place, um, and that takes a lot of conversations.
Oh, good.
Trustee Jeff.
Yeah, no questions, Your Honor, sounds good.
Okay, um, I have a few uh, things I've been writing down through your presentation. Uh, one, I feel, feel we're in a unique situation right now because we're at a crossroads, because not only are we looking at branding at the same time, we just recently uh, started a group with Lakota Group, which is also a more of an engineering and imaging. So how would, how would you feel working, because obviously we don't want to go two different directions. So working with staff, how are we going to take, because you're basically gonna start working side by side at the same time. So it's gonna be kind of tricky that we don't get two separate uh, messages here. Cause obviously, you, you cross over in a lot of those areas that they do. So we want to make sure that we're not just throwing money at the wall and bringing two different messages back here. So that's gonna be kind of unique, because normally this doesn't happen. Uh, so we're in a unique situation. And uh, we also have the Economic Development uh, group that's been in place for several years. And we have to, I personally want to thank them for getting us to this position, because we have a lot of talent on that commission that's really been driving a lot of the, th- this going forward. And we've kind of held back on, because they're really focused on imaging themselves as a downtown merchants group. Uh, we have a few uh, members on that group that are very talented. Uh, one of the gals uh, created the shop Antioch brand. So there's so many things that are there, but we kind of put the brakes on a little bit because they had another tag on it they're trying to use. And again, uh, not trying to stop their momentum, but the, the problem is you want to also make sure that it fits within the guidelines. So I think we have a lot to talk about when it comes to that. So we don't want to be uh, just spinning our wheels here. And then the other part is you have a Chamber of Commerce uh, group out there. So there's so many different things, and I was a merchant for over forty years, so I understand that this is not something new because I've sat in many, many focal groups over the years. And we're just, now we're just looking at a different firm now to come in. And uh, and we've done plenty of marketing in the town, it's just that, again, we're at that uh, time right now that we're, we're putting up we're putting the village in a position where we have mechanisms in place to really go forward. And again, coming off of a COVID, we're not quite sure where that's going yet, because obviously um, it's not over. So again, you're talking about recovery, um, how long is the recovery gonna be? So positioning the village in this way is, is kind of exciting, but not only to me, but I'm hearing it from the board here. And again, you have to invest, I, we realize that, but we also don't want to waste either. So obviously, that's my biggest concern is we're branding and imaging all at the same time as far as a lot of projects. So I'd like somebody to at least answer that question of, how are you going to be able to work with, uh, the Lakota Group is the group that we hired. So again, I think the board needs to hear that.
Sure. Um, well, I, I heard kind of a, a few questions in there and I'll try my best to address them and then open it up to Josh and Rachel as well. So first, it's actually um, interesting that Rachel and I came from the Lakota Group. So it's an urban design firm, um, and we just recently, what, what we found is that we were working on these kind of larger contextual projects and we're really drawn to the branding communications. So that is something that we decided we really wanted to focus on, but we still work with Lakota and a number of different projects. We're actually working with them, I think Rachel talked a little bit about a project in Indy where they are doing some of the urban design and we are working on the branding and messaging. So I think that we have and can continue to work very closely with them and make sure that what we are coming up with and, and what they are coming up with, they are closely um, intertwined. Because I think, you know, it's actually an, an amazing, um, it's amazing coincidence. And I think very like, um, it, it's opportune that you are thinking about downtown and physical spaces and also how you're talking about your village and downtown. And, and so that, and that's where some of this placemaking and the events and the programming, a lot of that probably will happen in your downtown. It's, it's so quaint and it's the heart of your community. Um, so I think there will be some really good synergy there. And so, and the other thing was just kind of this, you know, that there were some other taglines that were coming out, businesses were going out on their own. So there's, there's really two approaches there. One is engagement that we've talked about over and over again. But I think that that's where it's making sure that those business owners feel like they're a part of the process very early on and that they can help kind of shape whatever this messaging and brand ultimately ends up being, so that they are bought in. The other is that we provide a very easy-to-use toolkit. You do not need to be a graphic designer or a communications or marketing specialist where it includes kind of the story and ideas for businesses who, let's be honest, like, these local businesses are struggling to stay afloat right now. They don't have the time, the capacity to really be focusing on messaging. So part of our assistance is helping those businesses that make Antioch what it is, be able to plug into the story and tell it in their own way. And, and make sure that that's very consistent with the messaging that we come up with for this overarching plan. So we will work very closely with businesses, with the chamber, um, you know, with this tourism destination, marketing organizations to make sure that we're all telling the story and that everyone is getting what they need in their own way to help them and their own businesses and in their own economic interest.
And I think it's also important to, you know, we understand that, you know, the, the Village of Antioch's brand and, and marketing doesn't live in a vacuum. It's part of, you know, larger county, larger Chamber of Commerce things, like there's all these different players who all have stories that they want to tell. And, you know, we just want to be coordinated. It doesn't need to, you know, we're not trying to steamroll anyone and be like, no, this is the message. We just want to make sure that we're all telling a similar story about what this place is and then, you know, finding their own avenues for, you know, what serves us versus what serves the chamber versus what serves the county and the region.
I think that's all I had, um, on that. Anybody else, uh, from what we're saying here? Anybody else come up with anything else on thought process as, uh, we were, they were speaking at all?
Would you like me to put this on the agenda?
Yeah, I would think that, uh, again, how would the board feel going forward with this? Can they answer my question as far as the Lakota and working together? Uh, Trustee Pierce, you're okay with?
I'd be, I'd be okay with it as long as we get some of the financial stuff answered.
Trustee Mason?
Yeah.
Trustee Peterson?
I'd be fine with that.
Thank you, and Trustee Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
Trustee Jason.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, we will definitely, uh, in our, uh, March, I'm sorry, March meeting, it'll be the second Monday in March. And I'm, in the meantime, I'm sure Jim and Michael will be coordinating some things with you to bring back to us. And I know the attorney will be looking at the contractual things to make sure that the village is protected as far as, uh, what you're doing, so. Okay, and thank you for a nice presentation and have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
We really look forward to working with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next item we have, um, is our small business grant that, uh, we worked on with the Economic Development Commission. And Michael, uh, had a, had a group of, uh, people looking at it that, that were not part of this board or they were just outside.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to provide the board an update of where we are with the Small Businesses Grant. You recall, uh, in December, the Village Board gave staff instructions to proceed with a, uh, Small Businesses Grant. We all know that small businesses in Antioch are going through a tremendous challenge because of COVID. Uh, we did, uh, have a criteria and application that was reviewed and approved by the board. And there was a deadline of January twenty-nine. So I wanted to provide the board an update of where we are, uh, with assisting our small businesses. So after the deadline, just for summary, we did receive approximately twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three applications for the Small Businesses applications. Um, notices were actually sent out. Uh, we had a, a pretty extensive matrix. So we actually not only publicized it in our website, but we also sent individual letters, uh, to the bit, small businesses throughout the village, letting them know, um, based on a criteria that there was this, uh, application process that was open. Um, and so we did receive, uh, I believe, actually, I think I have twenty-two, but I think it's twenty-three applications. Um, we did have an opportunity, uh, last week to finally review those applications. And of the twenty, twenty-three applications, um, only two applications actually qualified. Um, we actually had sixteen applications that we need additional information on. Uh, they're incomplete. Um, a lot of, uh, the applicants did not provide actually metrics or data, which would allow us to verify that the actual sales, as you recall, the critical element was that sales had to be, um, 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 reduced or see a decline in gross sales of twenty-five percent. Uh, we thought that was a reasonable number based on the substantial impact that, uh, COVID has had on restaurants. Um, the majority of those applications actually simply did not provide us, uh, the metrics that we, to verify that information. Um, just for the record, we had three, um, members in the task force. We actually had, uh, Mr. Kenny, Ja- James Kenny, who's the, um, president of the State Bank of the Lakes, um, as part of Wintrust. Uh, really led up the committee, uh, and reviewed the applications. So again, in summary, we only had two applications that met the, um, compliance requirements. So staff not only wanted to provide an update, um, but we wanted to get some direction, um, from the board of how we should proceed. Um, it was staff's hope that we could try to work with the sixteen additional businesses, work with them to get the required additional information, bring all these applications back hopefully for approval, um, at the next board meeting. Um, but before I, I do that, I want to make sure the board was comfortable with that. Um, I think the goal was to try to help as many, as small businesses as we could. Um, but, you know, I think staff is disappointed that only two small businesses actually qualified. And just by coincidence, um, both of those, uh, applications are actually on the task force. Uh, they were not involved in the review process, but just for the record, um, they're both on, on the Economic Development Task Force. So with that, I'm really looking for, uh, additional direction from the Village Board on how we, we should proceed. We could just bring two applications for approval at the next board meeting, or we could, um, open this up for additional applications. So I'm looking for direction.
I'll open that up to the board. Uh, Trustee Pierce?
Um, how many applications or notices did we send out?
Um.
Do you have a count?
I actually have three pages. We have an Excel sheet, I think of four pages, in small print.
Did it go to all the members of the Chamber of Commerce? There's like four hundred and eighty-five members of the Chamber of Commerce? Well, I'm a little shocked there are only twenty-two applied back.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
What are our criteria, Scott? Cause some of them might have been over the, uh, the, uh, sales figures, you know, like, there was, there's a sales figure criteria, correct?
Yeah, there, well, there's a sales criteria, but we, we, as you know, we have a, a extensive, our, our interactive map, which has mostly small restaurants, small retail. We had, we, all those businesses that were sent letters. Um, I mean, I can provide the board the matrix. You can, you can look at the application, you can look at the actual matrix of businesses before sending letters.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to see that. Also, um, of the sixteen that need more data, you're, you're saying that with the, with that more data, they can get a quick review?
I think we can work something out with a quick review based on board's input, you know? I mean, unfortunately, a lot of the applications were, I mean, very incomplete, literally just simply, oh, you know, a couple sentences that their, um, that their gross sales had, had been impacted. There, there really was no extensive analysis in a lot of these applications. Um, they were, to be frank, most of them were very challenging to review.
Alright, I'd, I'd like to, personally, I'd like to find how we can get more information from those sixteen to see if they actually do qualify. And I'd also like to see if the, the, the deadline can be closed because at the point we approved it and then got the information out there. They, I heard they had three or four days to come up with it, which may explain, uh, the three or four sentences some of these applicants put down in the thing because they didn't have time to find the information. So.
Well, I think, I mean, I can.
I could be wrong, but that's, that's the word on the street.
Yeah, well, I don't think that's, I do not, that is not an accurate question. They had basically a month to, over a month between the times the, the letters went out and the time we actually posted it on the website.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee Mason?
Yeah, what's the, what's the gross sales? There, there's a gross sales.
There's a, there's a limit of half a million.
Yeah.
Half a million, and then there was.
So the people that, that, how come, how come, you know, some people got turned down because they have million dollars? If the restaurant lost, had a gross sale higher and lost a lot, it would be disqualified because they had gross sales over the half million.
You're correct, regards to, you have a, 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 or, a more.
So even though the re- as an example, we had a, we had some, we had a restaurant go out of business, he could have been over the half million dollar mark. But he could have used the money. Possibly, but we had, I, I think that, that gross sales figure is a little low, even though they could have had a fifty percent loss in, 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 in money. When they could have used the money, that gross sales seems to be, where, where it could be hurting some of the people getting approved.
Well, when we discussed the criteria, we discussed extensively.
Yeah, I, I know, I, I, I had some people that said that, a- after, you know, talking to them, because you don't know what everybody's is. And they're saying, well, I got hurt because I got, you know, my gross sales was over the half million dollars, but I took more money, you know, you know, a huge forty percent loss.
Right.
But I couldn't qualify because my gross sales at the beginning was higher.
Right.
And I think that's part of what we're asking the board is to make some suggestions if we want to pivot and raise that number to get more applicants or to qualify more businesses, you know, certainly, some of these restaurants are, are probably doing seven figures, you know, in the seven figures. But you may want to help them. So that's kind of what we're trying to draw from the board is, if you want to reach more people with this, we may need to change some criteria.
From sixty employees down to twenty employees is an obvious, there's a problem.
Yeah, no, we, we recognize that, so it's.
So, it's all about, it's all about headcount.
We, I started with two nights, that was the initial.
Right, so, so, the, the figure, you know, we get that information, then we had a month. You had less month, you had less time to get the PPP and that thing was open for, for three hours. We had to do the PPP information, get all that, and so a month is real generous. So, for, for, for the business guys, they're just getting, they're getting hammered. For everybody here, they're getting hammered on the gross grades, wage figures. So it's that's all gonna be relooked at.
Oh, we, I have a meeting of the task force on Friday. We can, we can, if, 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 if I get support from the Village Board, we can discuss a new criteria, maybe a little more flexible and have a second round. The board would support that.
Well, I think everybody's gotta be reminded of what the figures are, maybe through an email, and then they can put their input back in.
I mean, the act, the email.
Give it back to the board. Criteria for what, what's, what's, what qualifies for the grant money.
Okay.
Cause it, cause a lot of people are kind of rusty in what exactly, what qualifies you for grant money and what disqualif- qualifies. So I think a refresher for the board members, and then they can maybe shoot you an email back and say, well, may, maybe this should be looked at, maybe this should be looked at. Because, you know, I get the policy of Antioch with the businesses.
I can do that. I can, we can, I can refresh the criteria, it's, you know, what the criteria.
Yeah, I think, I think the board members just need to be reset that so that they understand what's going, going on.
Okay, do that.
Hey, uh, Trustee Peterson?
Like, I'd like that information as well. And, uh, I'd, I'd really like to revisit it and see if we can help these people. Because this has been a terrible thing that happened to all of them. If the board can help, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mary. Trustee Paulus?
Nothing to add right now.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I definitely think we need to reconsider and up the parameters a little bit. And I know I mentioned a few other times, but I also still think we should still be looking at that program about trying to get some kind of village bucks going where we could go redeem, you shop with an Antioch, come bring your local receipt in to Village Hall and get something back in your water sewer bill or, you know, something back to go spend back within the village. So I really think we should look at that as well.
I think that's, Jerry's got probably one of the best ideas when it comes to that because you're recirculating money back into the district, just like consumers spending money. So that actually is a great idea, Jerry.
We can come up with an idea. We can come up with some concepts. The task force has some members who've actually, we discussed that initially. We kind of ran out of time because during the holidays, because we're just launching the small business program during, just right after the holidays. But I think that's appropriate to revisit now. So we can, we can, this Friday, we, I actually have this on the agenda for the task force. We can discuss with the task force, maybe coming up with a program like that.
And that could be done at a debit card system, just like gift cards.
Right. So I'll discuss that with the task force on Friday. And then we, I will send the criteria to the Village Board members individually. And then we can discuss, maybe creating a new criteria with the task force. I'll bring that back to the Village Board for the discussion.
Great job. My question is the fact that I sit on the economic task force with with Trustee Duminiac and the business owners. We didn't have a whole lot of money in our budget to, what did we have, about two hundred thousand dollars, I think we set aside for Jim? Was, I mean, originally it was like under a hundred thousand, then we took some money and transferred it over to this program. So we have probably over four hundred businesses in the community, correct?
Right.
Could actually say that they, within their own rights, deserve something. But the, it's hard when you only have X amount of dollars. And then I keep stressing the fact that, working with Jim, even last year, trying to figure out how we can do this. We're not the federal government. We can't print paper. We can't print money. We only can live within our means. So we're trying to work within the most needy. And again, the task force is trying, and I think we're trying. But it's kind of shocking we only have two out of the sixteen. But we also want to be cautious to the fact that you want to make sure you get it to the right people at the same time. So again, I think we have to adjust our criteria. Maybe we use percentages possibly on that because what's the difference if a guy does five million in sales and one does a hundred thousand in sales? It's all relative, but at the end of the day, five thousand dollars isn't going to really go far for any of those people because if they're so far gone with this pandemic, you know, it's just a, it's just a stipend really. And hopefully, the PPP money is, I guess they have another round of PPP money going out, so hopefully we can help there. So again, I think we have to be creative with this and also maybe there is programs like we can, that Jerry said that with using a consumer element, because we had such a great program with our shop local campaigns, you know, working with the township with their programs and helping us with the video cameraing and things like that. They they work side by side with us. Thanks to Supervisor Shawna C's group coming in and and helping us fulfill some of those needs with their budget. So I think the creativity is there. It's just that how do we, how do we get that financial thing component working stronger? And maybe that has to be, not only the village money, maybe some of the consumer spending money can actually be circulated and we can come up with a line item within our budget to say, hey, we're going to do X and match it or whatever we're going to do to try to put dollars back in through consumer spending.
Right. We'll follow up, we'll follow up with the task force on Friday and hopefully bring this back to the next board meeting.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this question I can ask the board another round? Trustee Pierce, anything?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Mason?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Peterson?
No, Your Honor.
Trustee Paulus?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And Trustee John?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, Michael, thank you for the update and hopefully Friday, the task force will hopefully give you some guidance along with that and you can bring it back quickly here. Okay. Next on the agenda, I'll stay there, Michael, discussion regarding the EMB signs in the downtown. I left it on the agenda, obviously, at our last meeting. We had mentioned that we would make that part of the both groups, possibly the branding group and the imaging group, Lakota, and also the altogether group to kind of help us with some of that that question. But it doesn't keep us from at least discussing it here a little bit more. So that's why I left it on the agenda for that reason. So.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Staff is looking for, I think there was a fair consensus, and maybe I misinterpreted that, but I think there was some support for allowing EMB signs to a limited extent as a special use in the downtown sign district. Again, the question before the board is should electronic message boards be allowed in a very narrow sense in the downtown business district? Clearly, we allow them as a special use outside the downtown district. As you know, we had three applications last year within the downtown district. I know those, the board discussed that extensively and had extensive consideration. They did ask staff to look at the ordinance. We brought this back several times to the Village Board. Staff came back with a proposal to allow EMB signs, again, as a special use, not by a right, but as a special use, i.e. the Village Board has an opportunity to review each application as they come through the process for civic sign, civic uses, i.e. schools, religious assemblies, libraries, civic uses. I think we discussed that. I think if I with maybe one or two trustees exception, I think there was general support for that. But I'm looking for direction from the Village Board so we can proceed with a tax amendment at the at the level of the planning commission. So with that, I just want to reiterate to make make sure there's general support from the board so we can proceed with the tax amendment at at the planning commission. They would have to go through the process of any tax amendment, i.e. the sign order has to be modified, modify this section. So with that, I'm looking for direction from the Village Board to proceed with the tax amendment.
And what's been read here is the proposed.
That's correct. That's exactly correct. So what, again, to reiterate, we were modifying, allowing civic signs to be a special use within the downtown district. So they would have to come before the board for each application, just like United Methodist Church did, just like the library did, just like the school district did. So but it would be a special use. So variance would not be required, would just be a pure special use. So the board would have the prerogative to decide whether that sign is appropriate or not. And that, you know, directly, if the usual sign might be right next to a single family home. And the board may say, you know what, in this case, it's simply not appropriate because of the potential negative impact on that single family home. Because you know that this downtown district has single family homes next to businesses. So in each individual case, it would be the board's prerogative to decide whether it's appropriate or not. So that's the proposed tax amendment.
Okay, Trustee Pierce, any any thoughts?
I know there's a lot of discussion about this. Civic signs, as long as they're properly designed and put in place with you know, simple messaging on them, nothing fancy, I I think there's room for that. I think one of the proposals we had last year talked about the signs are going to be put on poles. You know, like, almost like conduit poles, and the sign would be on top of that. Like, I don't know about that. So I would think for civic, as long as they're properly designed and they have the right visual impact on the area, I I'm fine with it. I I'm not fine with expanding that further into commercial. That's my input.
Thank you. Trustee Mason?
I think you go to other communities, I think civic signs are important. I think the message need to be put out, especially they just passed the library referendum. I think it's important if if they they pass past the multi-million dollar budget, that people ought to start using the library. They ought to stay, they ought to be able to, you know, av- you know, advertise what's in there. Because nobody's going to know what's in there, what the millions have been spent for. The Methodist Church, for example, they do more than church service. You know, they help some people that that may need the help. The 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 school, the lower grade, obviously, the lower grade, they have school events. They got school cancellations. I mean, it's just, it's just needed. You go to Gurnee. Gurnee has has signs throughout their their district. Brown Lake has it, has it. So you go to other communities, they do have signs. They do have message boards. So it's it's not, you know, I I I get it's a sensitive area. But we're, we live in a world of information and and people, people need that information, whether they we've got a senior committee, community, and people aren't on Facebook, people don't have email, they don't know how to get on the the webpages. We we have to, we have to give them information every which way we can. So it just makes common sense to have that information available.
Anything else?
Nope.
Trustee Peterson?
Antioch is unique, and we all know that. But we do live in a time of information, as Trustee Mason says. I I think they should be allowed as long as it's done correctly and properly, and it's not obtrusive to neighboring homes. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Paulus?
Yeah, I've gone on record before as being pro for this, as long as it's done in a black and white or white on black with the stationary message for like ten seconds. And as long as there's room, you know, you can't, even if a civic organization was to buy a building downtown, you know, somewhere on Main Street where there's no room, obviously, we would not allow that. But in the case where there's room, you know, we get into these, like, the last couple of weeks prior to this, when it was in the below zeros or, you know, we're getting two feet of snow or whatever, the last thing you want to do is go out and change those little letters on those boards. And, you know, I know some people have said that those, that these are are not very attractive signs. But if you look at some of those signs with the letters on them, they're not very attractive. They're they're yellowing and letters fall off and people pull letters off and make other words out of them and, you know, things like that. So I I think if, you know, we want to help these organizations and things get their message out, then we need to do it so that it looks nice, but we need to do it so that they can make those changes from the comfort of the inside of their their offices instead of making them go outside and change seats. So I'm I'm for them.
Okay, Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I concur with Trustee Mason and Trustee Peterson and Trustee Paulus. I think message boards, they do work. I find myself, you know, when I drive by looking at certain ones, such as the one in Walgreens and the Antioch High School one, has really informative information. Many, many years ago, I used to help old Joe, Joe, old man Joe Sturbin over at the bowling alley do the ones up high. And like Trustee Paulus said, he had the long stick and little letters would fall off and you go out the next day and it would be half gone. It just looked terrible. So, you know, new times, new technology, as long as we do it tastefully and we do it right, considered on a case by case basis. I think if, I think we have to move forward in a in a new era.
Again, I reiterate that I also would like to incorporate a little bit of the EMB signage with the consultants, just to get their positioning on it in in a downtown setting. I know, you know, we don't want it in historical, we're at night, we're basically talking pretty much the civic organizations and churches, schools. I've been on record to say that I am not a fan of the ones that are digital motion pictures and you can do a lot of things on it. I think a lot of that's distracting in certain areas, especially on some of the highways where they get real bright. It can distract you and actually be a nuisance. So again, technology is where we're at today and things are getting better with some of the signage. So I think what I heard here tonight is very true that we need to at least get a little bit up to the times as far as this technical stuff with these signs. So again, I'm not discounting the fact that we have consultants, and I think that's going to be part of maybe their scope is to at least give us an idea of where they're at with with these historical districts and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, next, we have the Township Park Co-op discussion. I'll let you lead that off.
Thank you, Your Honor. Over the last several months, maybe more than that, over a year, we've been up the village with myself and you, Your Honor, and Supervisor Shawna C have been, you know, talking about parks, the co-op agreement, different ideas for, you know, how to move forward with certain initiatives and being improvements of parks or maintenance of parks or, you know, engaging organizations in different ways. So I I think it all, we are currently in a cooperative, intergovernmental agreement with the township. It's a valid IGA. If you read the IGA, you can see where it was followed in certain cases and maybe wasn't really followed in certain instances. But the IGA speaks to and contains a provision for a a co-op committee comprised of appointees from both of the both entities, the township and the village. And they're tasked with, you know, sitting down and discussing the various, you know, topics within that agreement and and how we operate parks and, you know, again, maintain them, improve them or run them. So I I think as a first step, you know, to begin these discussions, again, I will say that that committee has not met in years. You know, it was very active during the development of the Tim Osman Sports Park. And it was done in a few phases. But after that, you know, really, the I I think the the joint maintenance of the park, I think the township would plow it, the village would mow it, the Parks Department would schedule fields similar to what they do in other parks. But maybe it's time to reconstitute the committee, get some discussions going about our parks. I think there certainly are people on the park board that that may want to participate and have opinions, you know, certainly about maintenance of the parks and certain improvements. So I I guess this conversation we can open up. Supervisor Shawna C is here with us tonight. He may want to address the board. Or did I cover it? So so the idea here is, let's get that committee formed again and and working on some things because, you know, there are, it's been a while since we've really had serious conversations about you know, these topics in our parks and and how we how we can better serve the community through through our parklands. So.
Excellent. First and foremost, Jim, I'd like to reach out and actually thank Tom Shawna C, Supervisor Shawna C, for actually taking that initiative to meet with us and come back with this co-op. You know, most people realize that we do not have a park district. So I think this is the next best thing to not having it is to work together because, again, Antioch Township is also part of the village. So I think bringing this back together to try to re reinvigorate it and you get the excitement back with these parks and getting the organizations, which are a very integral part of our 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 village here, you know, Vikings and the baseball leagues, the cheerleading, you know, the Viking cheer and all that, and the baseball groups and even the soccer groups. I I think they're looking for some of that also. And I I like, again, thank Tom for kickstarting that with us. And Jim, thank you for meeting several times with him. I only met with him a few times with you, but I think you guys have been the initiatives behind getting this to this point. I just would like to get the board's feedback as far as where we go from here. Do we we revisit that with with Tom and get this co-op together? I I think we're working on a letter to send to the organizations, the township and myself, the village, so we can get their engagement. So again, tonight's basically to reintroduce the co-op to get it back in discussion phases and start moving toward that goal to get that act, like, right on that, Supervisor Shawna C?
Absolutely. We're working better together than we ever have. You know, we're using using all these catch lines now, better together, one Antioch, Antioch United, all. We actually have started working together more so than we ever have in the past, at least, at least in the last five years, for sure. Prior to that, we didn't really have much communication. This IGA that Jim was talking about was was signed back in two thousand. This IGA that Jim was talking about was, was signed back in 2004. And then once the park was put up, it kind of fell by its wayside. Antioch Village went their way, the township went their way, and we were them against us again. Now we're working together better than we ever have. So this is one way of being able to do it. You know, the saying is a, a rising tide rises, raises all boats, no matter its size. We've got people using Viking, uh, uh, Osman Park Viking and Cheer are the biggest users out there. But, you know, they can do one thing for their two fields, but the rest of the field suffers. We, you can only do so much with public funds. One of the parts of the, of the IGA was to, to think about the establishing a 501, 501 C3 co-op that, that would help fund the parks and the maintenance of the funds down the road. Because we don't have a park district, we're not going to be able to tax people for it. So we've got to figure out other creative ways to be able to use our community the best way we can. We've got a community of great volunteers. We just gotta, we gotta hurt them. And I think now that we're working together, now I'm, I'm very excited about the opportunity. So I, I think it's the right thing to do. Though the wording that you guys have seen, that, that all has to be redone and, and all of that. But I, I think it's a really, really good step in the right direction. So thanks for working with us.
All right, that's gonna open it up. Scott, I think we'll get your feedback as far as the board here, as far as if you, if you're interested in seeing us get this reworded or?
No, I just think we should shut down all the parks and everything.
No.
Seriously, I really appreciate Mr. Shaughnessy reaching out to everybody and saying, can we talk about the parks? We, we, there's so much we're learning through this COVID process. People are staying closer to home and they're expecting more of our parks, they're expecting more opportunities. They're expecting the, that we can do things for them that we haven't been doing. And the village can't do it alone. The township can't do it alone. But maybe working together, we can find ways to do things with our parks that make them a better experience for our residents. So I, again, I want to thank Mr. Shaughnessy for reaching out to everybody and trying to get this re jump started. It, it, he's brought up a lot of points and has made everybody think more about our parks and what we can do to make them better. So I, I'm excited about working out a co-op with the township and anybody else we can draw into it to help to make our parks better. We've got a lot to do.
Thank you, Scott. Trustee Maisick?
I'm on board with supervisor Shaughnessy, so I think it's a great plan.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Peterson?
I'm excited about it. Since the, the parks is my committee, I'm very excited about working with the township again and reinvigorating this IGA. And, and let's get moving. Spring is around the corner and we could do a lot. And there are going to be a lot of families using those parks again. And that's all they did all last summer. And I think that this is going to be another summer of people going to their neighborhood parks. So let's get going.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, trustee Peterson. Trustee Paulus?
Yeah, I think it's a great thing. I think then we need to include that with some of these marketing things that we're going to be doing. You know, just driving down Depot Street and seeing the great job you guys did with the Frisbee Golf Area. But I don't know that a lot of people know that that's, unless you drive down that way all the time, that that's, that fixed up like that. But that'd be something we need to get the word out on, that that was done because it looks really nice. You can actually use it now. I don't think you could even use it before. Yeah, so, you know, it's just something like that, when we do stuff like that, to make sure we get the word out to people so that they know that that stuff is available. But I, I, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great. Thank you, trustee Paulus. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah, what, what I'd like to say is when I became a Parks member in 2010, that was one of the hardest things I could not figure out is the us versus them mentality, village versus township. Even though we make baby steps and so forth, it just was such a distant relationship. And when I became village trustee in 2013, I, it was the same thing. And ever since supervisor Shaughnessy has been on board, it, it's, our relationship has just made great strides. I'm fully on board. I think he's done a phenomenal job on mending that relationship with village administrator Kind, working with him and, and all of us here on the village board. So great. I'm, I'm all for this night and day compared to when I started in 2010.
Okay, it looks like we're going to go forward with that. So Jim and myself and Tom will start working to try to formulate some, some guidelines and so we can move forward. And again, I have to reach out with the fact that we have some members that were on the original committee that might not even be with us as far as board members, trustees that were on it in the past aren't, they're, they're not even on the board anymore. And I did reach out to one of the past person that sat on it and I talked to that particular person. And, and he's on board with whatever direction we'd like to go. So, so we're, we're good on that, Tom. Okay. Last thing on the agenda is our draft budget presentation. Jim?
Thank you again, your honor. So tonight was meant to introduce you to the budget. This is not going to get into the weeds. We are fortunate to be in a, we're fortunate to be in a, in a position and an earlier, you know, we typically aren't coming to the board with a completed budget in February. We typically present that in March, but we were able to assemble a, a draft budget. We'd like to distribute it to you and just kind of start the process. Typically, this would be the point where we would start to, you know, I would discuss this with trustee Paulus and we'd start to refine the budget and, and present, you know, in March, probably a, a little bit more refined budget. But in the interest of being just fully transparent, you know, why not involve the board at this point and, and take a look at the entire budget? And I'd like some input, I guess, on, on a few topic, a few topics or a few items from the board. Remembering that staff, prepare your budget. It is your budget for your approval. You know, it's the community, the village's budget. So you really should have a hand in its formulation and its components. And, you know, the, the first question, I guess, I, I would like, and this doesn't, you don't have to answer, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. But I guess I'd like the board to, you know, as they think of initiatives, projects or, or plans or, or things that you think are important. I would like you to, you know, feel free to, you know, this would be the time, if you want to get it included in the budget, you know, this, this is at the early stage. And now would be the time to forward, you know, Joy or I, and Joy is on us via, on this via Zoom. She's going to present some of the budget numbers to you in a minute. But, you know, we just want to give you a very mile-high overview of where we're at, what this budget currently looks like, as well as a financial picture of what we've been able to accomplish, you know, over the past several years. So I, I guess we're going to start on this presentation. Can we get the presentation on screen? So folks can see it at home and in the room? Okay, let's go to the, I kind of covered the first, the second slide there, Joy.
Right.
So again, the draft, we're trying to keep the board informed and, and we're trying to get some guidance from the board so that trustee Paulus in the department heads will have some direction, knowing that the board, you know, that has been involved in this early, can, can get this budget where it needs to be for approval. So Joy, I'm going to let you kind of take over, present, present some of the numbers in the budget, please.
Sure. So our, I've only highlighted here our major funds. Obviously, our general operating fund. We project revenues of 13.1 million, expenditures of 13 million, with a surplus of 94,000. The biggest area of concern would be our capital fund. As you know, the capital fund has no dedicated funding source. So we do anticipate about $30,000 in park, in impact fees, park, public works, police. However, the departments have submitted requests for about 2.1 million. That leaves the capital fund with a deficit of 2.1 million. And, and then our last major fund, water and sewer fund, does have a deficit of about 100,000. And that's fine for the water and sewer fund. They do have cash that they can draw on to balance that budget. So our major concern here would be the capital fund. Now, since the general fund actually pays for capital items, we kind of have two choices here. We can transfer some cash from the general fund to the capital fund to take away that deficit. Or we can cut about $2 million of expenditures in the general operating fund in order to, to be able to make that transfer. Or we can use available fund balance in the general fund for the capital fund. But we addressed this a little further on in the slide.
Joy, can I jump in for a second?
Sure.
I don't want to get, the budgets that the department heads have, have all presented were pretty tight. You know, Joy said, hey, we can go back to the operational general fund and cut 2 million. I think that would be extremely painful. You know, I've seen bad budgets before, you know, in the years past, maybe going back to 2010 or something like that. You know, sometimes we found big numbers that didn't need to be in there. Over time, our, our departments, I think, have been very frugal and have learned to budget frugally. And if you asked me to go, you know, try to cut 2 million out of the operational fund, we, we would be chopping off very necessary things, you, you know, things that I think you, you wouldn't want to. So just to, just so we're clear, I, I don't think we have that much meat left on the bone in what you have in front of you. And you can certainly look at that. You're going to get the next, you know, few weeks to take a look at it. But I, I just, I want to make sure we get that clear from the start. If, if those are the marching orders, we're going to bring back some, probably some pretty unpalatable ideas and cuts.
So I want to spend a little, just a little time explaining this slide. I know it kind of looks, the way it looks could be a little misleading. So I want to start with fiscal year 2019. The blue line at the top are our revenues, actual revenues. And the green line would be our actual expenditures in 2019. Now that space between the two would be your excess of revenues over expenditures. And that's how we build our fund balance by, obviously, by collecting more money than we're spending. And as Jim says, we, we have been very tight, very frugal for the last, I don't know, nine years or so. Ditto with fiscal '20. That large, that gap between the revenues and the expend, actual expenditures helped us to build our cash. Now, in fiscal '21, as you know, there were some impacts with COVID. This is projected expenses. Typically, as you can see from 2019, we typically, typically come well under what we have budgeted. But we still have a few months left. We haven't got that far yet in the budget process where the expenditure projection could be, you know, it could be a little tighter. And for fiscal '22, this is the budget. Typically, this is how we budget. If this, if all, the prior years were all budget, these would be two parallel lines, very close to each other. Because we always deliver a balanced budget where your revenues and your expenditures are very, very close. So that, that closing of that, that, that line on fiscal '22 is not an indication of spent, more spending or less revenue. It's just that we're comparing budget to what has actually happened to what we project will happen. Do I, are there any questions on that slide?
On the first slide?
On the first slide?
Let's go back.
Okay.
So just for the audience, I don't want the audience to think, Joy, and you can explain it, that, that we're, we're $2 million in the hole?
No, all this means is that we have to, we, we have available cash we can use. That's one of the options to fund capital or we can just not do any capital.
I, I think we can, the next slide, I think, may go to your question.
So that's, I just want to make sure. So if someone tunes in right now, that's what I just want to make the point before someone makes the point in the audience.
Okay.
Watch the slide.
So this next slide is, yeah, that, that one.
This is, right. Go ahead, Jim.
This is kind of your, the snapshot of your financial picture and what's happened. So because of those, that, that revenue line has remained above our expenditure line year after year, the area between those lines becomes what is, is known as fund balance. So you can see, and, and I want to blend the reserve concept in here too. The village made a policy years ago and a strategic, part of our strategic plan was to make sure we had a reserve. We'd never had a reserve, you know, when we go back 12 years, there was virtually no rainy day fund, no real reserve. You know, we might've had some cash some years and some years we didn't. But we, we made a policy to, to put money away to, to target a 25% reserve. And that's very typical for municipals to have a 25% reserve. It, it's about three and a half million dollars of your operational fund. It's like putting, it's like a financial advisor might say, you know, have three months of money set aside in case something should happen to you and your income was damaged. You know, it's the same kind of concept. So we've been funding reserve for, for a long time here and we're, you know, I'm happy to report this year, you're going to hit your target. In this upcoming budget, you're going to contribute, and we've been contributing at a rate of about $300,000 a year to our reserve. And I'm not sure if we actually targeted 22, but it, it might've been and we wanted to get it funded by 22. But that would make sense because 22 is here and here, here we are, we're at our 25%, which is about three and a half million dollars. That's money you don't touch unless there's, you know, something, you know, really outrageous going on. Some communities have had to go to reserves and, you know, COVID has reminded everybody why reserve is important. Because sometimes revenues get damaged. The village of Gurnee, I understand, had to hit the reserve. They're so heavily reliant on sales tax, not property tax there. You know, they had to dip into reserve. But that would be something I think you think of as a last resort. So consider that three and a half million dollars a great accomplishment for, for this village and, and the, the boards today and some of the, you know, prior boards to have the fortitude to do this. Has put you in a very, I, I think, good, good position, certainly when we get those rating calls. You know, they want to see it, they want to see that you have some cash at reserve. So, you know, this, this helps us, hopefully will help us moving forward with bond ratings. But then you see in the second line there is available cash. So we've been able to fund a reserve and this is kind of like your, your checking account. So the question that trustee Maisick was, was, I think, aiming at is, so we're $2 million in the hole on this budget? Well, yes and no. You, you have not spent on all these previous budgets, you know, it looks like about $2.5 million, 2.6 is, I think, what we're estimating we're going to end '21 with. And if, if this current budget, this draft were passed today, which is not going to happen, we already see problems. I mean, I already see things that I want to change in it and things that might've been missed. But i- if we did, we'd have to take two and a half or about 2.1 million dollars from your available cash, move it over to capital and you could fund everything in, in this draft. So it's, you know, it is a way to balance your budget is to use the cash that you have available. You don't want to accumulate too much cash. This is the taxpayers' money. If we're not spending it, why did we collect it? So at some point, you don't want too big of a cash, a fund balance. We're not a bank. So we got two choices and this is really the big question on this budget. I assume you all want to fund the reserve, but do you want to burn fund balance? I will tell you, Joy and I had a conversation this afternoon. We're a little uncomfortable, you know, knowing that there's approximately $2.5 million of cash available. Burning 2.1 of that would leave you, let's say, 400, you know, some thousand dollars. Burning two point one of that would leave you, let's say, four hundred, you know, some thousand dollars. And that would be to Joy and I, an uncomfortable place to be. I think we should probably target about a million dollars, not not really drop below a million dollars in available cash. And consider this like you're checking, there's probably a number where you get nervous when your checking account gets below. You know, you don't like to see your checking account ever get below maybe a certain number. And I would say a million dollars is probably where Joy and I start to feel more uncomfortable when we go below that number. So I think, you know, what I'm recommending is that we do, you know, take a look at our capital. And this board will tell us, it's again, it's your budget, you know, we'll prepare it any way you like. We have the ability to do capital because we have, we're in a great position. We have some money, we have cash available beyond our reserves. We could, we can do capital. I just don't think maybe as aggressive as we've, you know, the first draft of this, we might not want to be that aggressive.
Yeah, I just, I brought up the question just so if anybody's watching this that, you know, we're at the time where someone might twist it to think, hey, we're broke. And I just want to make sure that people understand because they don't understand how budgets work and how we put money away. That all of a sudden tomorrow, all we're seeing is silliness.
No, I totally, I totally agree with where you're going there. So, you know, this is kind of where I want to, you know, hopefully generate some discussion, your honor. You know, about the the board's tolerance for using fund balance. And, you know, like I say, we got to, you know, now that we're at the early stage in the budget. Trustee Polis and Joy and I need to kind of sit down with your input and, you know, try to, try to, you know, craft this budget to where it needs to be, to where you're all comfortable. So.
I think the question, Jim, is 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 it's too early for us to really get engaged because you don't have a whole lot of line items on it. But I think what you're asking is where the board feels comfortable with the fund balance as far as that portion. I think I I would, my priority would be to get the reserve out of the way going forward. So we don't have that number anymore to worry about. I think that would be a good achievement for this board to have. I think we should probably take a hard look at the capital, the importance of it. I think we should spend some of it personally because of the fact that you you hit, you hit it right. And you said it is money's collected from the, from the taxing body to to fund the village things. And we have to make sure we're not just hoarding cash because, you know, they want us to spend the money for their needs. So I think we need to do that cautiously. But I think it's going to be up to the board to give us that direction because they are part of this whole process. So again, I I I'm happy for the board and and staff for getting us to this position and working very conservatively over the last, you know, twelve years. Because, you know, we weren't, you know, some of us were on this board when we weren't as comfortable. So again, Scott, you any input on that? You've been here kind of the longest.
You know, I I think when we talk about the capital funds, we need to, we need to know what exactly we're talking about. Because that's things like bike paths and that's fixing the sawmill and that's building Pittman property or fixing our water mains. Or so we're having water main breaks. So the capital funds are things that we need to take care of. And if we have money, we we need to be using that money to take care of things. So people in their, in their neighborhoods think, know that we're taking care of their neighborhoods, the infrastructure, you know, the sidewalks and the neighborhoods. So we need the list of what the capital projects are. And then we need to prioritize those. And then we need to go, how are we going to spend those and do what with the money? You know, whether, I don't necessarily feel comfortable knocking all the money down to three hundred thousand dollars or four hundred thousand dollars. But at the same time, I don't, I don't feel right not taking care of things and just putting money in the bank. Which which may be some of what we've been doing because we needed to put the money in the bank because we didn't have none in the past. As the mayor says, there were several years where we were running negative balances and negative funds for the year. So we're in a good position right now to start addressing the needs of this community. And there's a lot of needs. So until we see what those needs are and what they're going to cost, I don't know how we can discuss this. I mean, you can choose not to do anything and not have that two million dollar capital red letters.
Yeah, let's, you know what, and we have a slide for that. Maybe we should finish, go through the presentation and then open the discussion up because I think that might help help a little bit. So Joy, why don't you go ahead and take the next slide?
Okay, so I just wanted to start giving an idea of what's in the general operating fund. After this, we'll address the capital, the major capital budget requests. So overall, our personnel costs have increased about about three percent. That includes a three percent cost of living increase for for non-bargaining employees that approximates about seventy four thousand. And as you know, we just passed a new FOP contract. Their approximate increases, it varies depending on where you are in your steps. It's approximately about a five percent increase amounting to, again, approximately a hundred and two thousand. And we were able to offset some costs. We did have a couple of retirements and one person resigned. And they were replaced with either part-time employees or the server, the position was contracted out. Or we did hire employees at the lower end of the wage scale. So that would offset any other, the five percent, the eight percent increase in personnel costs. As you know, the police pension expense has increased by a hundred and thirty thousand per the the actuarial recommendation. And then in also larger amounts in the operating budget would be the business incentives, facade program, grants, pond treatments. They are total about four hundred and fifty thousand. There may be some possibility that some of this can be moved to paid for by the business district fund. But that would, you know, as we go further along in our discussions, that is one possibility.
Joy, can you tell us exactly what, you've marked down that the police pension fund has increased by a hundred and thirty thousand. How much are we putting in on a yearly basis for the police pension? I think it's two point one.
Yes, for the new budget, new budget, it's two point one million.
That we're putting into the pension program?
Yes. Now, the reason I'd like to explain now, the reason why we don't, we're not ever catching up. It's because the target that that we are trying to reach increases every year. So as we put it, put in more funds to meet that twenty forty two, twenty seventy six deadline. The target keeps moving. So it it appears that we are not making any progress, but we we actually are.
So, yeah, we have been funding, we've been in the habit over the past, ever since I've been working with Joy is, you know, funding the police pension by the actuarial calculation, you know, not shorting it. You know, that number, just so everybody kind of has, you know, a reference point. You know, when I began budgeting for the village, that was a three hundred thousand dollar number. You know, that, and and we hear, fast forward twelve years, and that number's two point one. So every year, we have the actuaries calculate what we should contribute. And this is per state statute, this is how it's done. And we levy that amount and contribute that amount.
That number comes from the state, right?
Well, they they initially, when I first started with the village, the Illinois Department of Insurance would provide the actuarial amount. And then about six or seven years ago, I hired an actuary. And the act, the actuary would do the same calculation, but based on different rate tables. I'm not an actuary, I don't know the correct terms. I think it's called death rate tables. They would, they started providing a higher number than the Illinois Department of Insurance. So once, the once we started using an actuary, then I started going with the higher number. But in the earlier years, we were just using the Illinois Department of Insurance recommendation.
So we fund it every year, it's paid for based on the recommendation, correct?
Yes, 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 we don't pick a number out of a hat. It's either based on I D O I or the actuary.
Because it gets confusing because sometimes it comes across as it's funded X amount. People think we're reporting it that much and we're not.
No.
Each year.
Correct.
And that's mortality tables, not.
Mortality, that's what it is, not death. It does, I'm sorry.
So let's go, let's let's show them the capital request. These are the major capital requests. Road program, although we have, we're still in the process of refining, you know, which streets we're doing. We have a new rating and we're going to be proposing, you know, we've been doing roads at about a million dollars a year. And we'd like to keep up with that. But, you know, if if it's decided that, you know, if you say, listen, Jim, I'm not comfortable burning, you know, below a million dollars worth of fund balance, you know, I'd probably cut some of the roads out. Your debt service, there's not much you can do about that. Village Hall's leaking. We have buckets all over Village Hall. The roof needs attention. We put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar number on repairing the Village Hall roof. But I don't know if you've looked, the parking lot in the police station. It's in real tough shape, that one, hopefully in conjunction with maybe the fire district. Maybe there's some cooperation there. I I think I'd like to attempt to see if the fire district has any plans to do some paving and maybe, you know, maybe there's a cooperative effort there between police and us and fire and to maybe get that parking lot paved. The Mary's Park fence is in there. And and the roof at the police station also needs attention. Snow slides off of that roof, creates hazardous conditions. We are, we are not parking cars next to that police station. We, there's probably some, something we can do to the roof to stop those snow slides that come off of that roof to eliminate what is a hazardous condition. So that's where we get to the two point one million dollars in in requests. Some of those rightfully, make sure, but rightfully could be transferred to business district. But the Village Hall roof, for instance, that may be something I can say, that that's a lawful, rightful use of business district funds to put a physical improvement in place. I want to make sure on that. But so the the maneuver, you know, if you said, if you said to me, Jim, I want you to cut a little of this out and try to get, you know, not burn as much fund balance. Those are the types of maneuvers I would employ is to try to see if I can't find other funding sources, like like a business district to cover some of these expenses. And then.
I think, Jim, if I may just clarify, on the road program, the total amount budgeted is actually one point five million. Four hundred and fifty thousand of it is budgeted in the M F T fund. So this, this one point one is just the capital fund portion of it. So that is also an area that, you know, could be reduced.
And M F T is a motor fuel tax.
Motor fuel tax.
But as you look at this list of capital requests, it's not doing much.
No.
You got to realize, Jim, I can explain too that up until what, the twenty, we started doing roads like we have. In the past, it was always a bond referendum. And we've been funding these roads for the past several years as we go without having to bond those expenses.
Not a good practice to put your road paving on a credit card. You know, you don't put groceries on a credit card. You should pay your cash as you go for your road paving. Because if you do a twenty year bond, that road is going to need to be repaved. The road surface won't last twenty years. So that road will be, need to be repaved in fifteen, but you'll still be paying for that surface that you're tearing off. So that's why I would never recommend that you do bond issues for roads.
Yeah, we were repaving Oakwood Knolls before we even paid off its bonds from the original two thousand paving.
That that happened, yeah. That's why I I wouldn't, I think that was, that was something probably we shouldn't have done. But it it did happen.
Well, we didn't know.
We were paving roads for the second time before we paid off the first paving job. So, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. Anyway, there are, there are some maneuvers. You know, do we need to amp up the road paving from a million to a million and a half? No, we don't. I think I'm, I think a million dollar program is a pretty good program. We have vastly improved the condition when we, and I will show you that. We'll give you the new condition survey and what, you know, how we rate these streets. Every street gets rated every so often. And we've made major improvements. We used to have, you know, forty and fifty percent of our roads in poor condition. You know, the the number ones, twos and threes, which are the poorest conditioned streets. They're a very small portion of the pie now. You know, it might, might be something like, you know, ten or fifteen percent where it was fifty, sixty percent. So we we've made massive improvements in our condition of our streets based on how much money you've been spending on road paving.
Hey, Jim, is, are we looking at doing the road all the way from Hillside in front of Public Works all the way down in front of the sawmill?
Yeah, Hillside's definitely on the list.
But I mean, from Hillside all the way down by the Methodist Church in front of the Public Works building.
Oh, that's depot.
Yeah.
I I couldn't tell you right now if depot.
The only reason I ask is because if the fire department was looking at something and that road was being done and we needed the police department, they might give us a deal because they're all
Yeah, the the road paving companies will not pave parking lots. It's just, nope. It's two different sets of contractors. I dot certified, because we're using M F T money, I dot certified contractors do road paving. They, you know, maybe as a separate contract, but they they won't, they won't blend them two. They're two different crews entirely that do parking lots and roads. It's a good idea. But, yeah, we, I'll give you more detail. This, again, tonight is supposed to be very high level, just here's where we're at, first draft. I'm not putting anybody on the spot. All I want to do is kind of highlight some things, solicit some, some input and conversation. So we kind of know where to steer this thing moving forward. And you don't have to tell me tonight, you can kind of take a look at this. Go ahead, start leafing through the the budget. You have the document digitally, I believe. We can also provide it to you as a paper copy, if you prefer. Scott wants one. Do you all want a paper copy?
Yep.
No.
Just don't do it in black ink, I mean colored ink.
Okay. Okay, guys, yeah.
Jay.
Okay, yeah, anybody.
I'd like a paper copy.
Yeah. Let's, let's just use tonight as a jumping off point. Here's where we're at. And then as thoughts occur to you, as you have some time to look at the budgets, you know, and feel free to go go through it line by line. Then at the next, you know, maybe at the next meeting, we can certainly talk about this at a regular meeting or the March Committee of the Hall. And we'll start to, hopefully start to refine this budget to where it needs to be. I would make a goal of trying to approve the budget in April. You know, fiscal year starts May one, it's always nice to have a budget approved in April. So we know what we're doing and we can just move on projects. There's only one or two more slides. Why don't we get through them all? You have debt service on the wastewater plant there and the water and sewer fund, crest sanitary sewer construction. We have a pending grant from the state to do that project, six hundred thousand dollar grant. If we get the grant, we'll do the project. If we don't get the grant, we won't do it. So it'll, it'll be neutral either way to the budget. And we're going to introduce some I N I initiatives from the sewer studies, the I N I studies. We've identified many, many, many manholes that need rehabilitation. There's about three hundred thousand dollars worth. And again, we'll show you what the results of the study, the condition of the manholes. We have some very good data. But we, we need to begin, you know, stop doing studies and start doing improvements on these systems. So that's, that's what sewer and water looks like. Sewer and water has, has, also has a fund balance. So, you know, burning, you know, going about a hundred thousand dollars of of fund balance in sewer and water, you know, that, that you can tolerate. That's what that, that money is, those rates were collected to improve the system. And now it's time we start taking those monies and improving the system. So the next steps really are are going to be, you know, for you to kind of ask us questions, you know, call, call us up, email us, write us a note, whatever, however you'd like. Questions or clarifications or requests. If you say, you know, I really think we need a new, you know, such and such. Well, let's, let's throw it into the budget and see how it shakes out. Again, it's your budget. Our next steps are to call liaisons in to meet with departments. I think I'll, I'll first, you know, usually I'll, I'll meet with the financial liaison, trustee Polis. And we'll have some more, more conversations about where, you know, what he sees in this budget because he's got a great background for this. And then we'll, we'll call you in to meet with department heads. So the department heads can explain their budgets to you. And you can provide input on on your liaison ship. And then we'll finalize for approval. Hopefully that'll be in April. And then we'll finalize for approval. Hopefully that'll be in April. It's really, I, I, we, I don't, we don't need to spend a ton of time on this tonight. I just want, I just, we were in a position to show you something. So we're showing you it and kind of our view of it at this point in time. Joy, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't, Jim. You covered it very well.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, Jim, for the great presentation. Joy, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy.
Hey, that being said, we have nothing really else on the agenda. Other business, I don't believe we have any other business. Jim, we have anything else tonight?
Okay.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say one thing, your honor, before we adjourn.
Real quick.
Tonight's my first, first night back here in person since I had my little incident. I want to say when I left coming in person. We were lucky if we could see one person's picture on the computer in a Zoom meeting. And now we've got a screen up here with all the Zoom attendees. They shared, they shared the, the presentations on there so everybody could see them. I, I just want to thank staff for the work they've done, learning how to do new technology and making things just as professional as a real business would run them. Because this is a real business for our, our, our customers, which are the residents and the voters. And I, I think staff has done a tremendous job over the last two, two months, making this a real meeting and using real technology. So thank you all very much, the staff.
Okay, thank you, trustee Pierce for that. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Maisick. I believe you seconded.
Yep, I said it.
Trustee Pierce, you seconded it, correct?
No, I didn't second it, but I would.
Second.
I did.
Okay, trustee Peterson seconded. I'll say aye.
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 Motion adjourned.